All right, guys, we'll call this meeting to order. Could you stand before we please their hand? Please, please. All right, I'm sorry. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call is coming in.
Chairman Frazier.
Here.
Board Member King.
Here.
Board Member Florence.
Here.
Board Member Fleming.
Here.
Board Member Coon.
Here.
Town Attorney, Lizzy Lander.
Here.
Town Clerk, here.
All right, I'm going to state too, this is the planning and zoning meeting we're opening, this is called an order, so item number one addition, deletion, change of approval. Any changes? I'll present a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor of approving the agenda items, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, item two, approval of minutes from the last meeting, January 17th, 2024. Any motion to approve of it?
Making a motion to approve the minute from January 17th, 2024.
Second.
Good, all in favor of approving minutes from January 17th, 2024, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, item number three is public participation, guys, this is on the agenda items only, please. Citizens comments, no, there's none of them here, right? So, agenda items only, the planning and zoning meeting, so anybody need to speak? Okay, I'll go ahead and close, public participation, we move to item number four, new business. Number one, consideration of special use permit, number SUP 2302, concept development.
This is a special use permit for concept development on behalf of Blueberry Hill Properties. This is to allow a commercial use located less than 100 feet from a residential zoning district on a 2.03 acre portion of park property known as parcel number 14305-000. And it's shown as attachment A on the attach to the final order. It just goes through here and has all the items that are necessary. Basically, it says that it's consistent with the Fort White comprehensive plan. The use will have general compatibility and harmony with uses and structures on adjacent and nearby properties, public infrastructure is available for the proposed site, the type and character to improve the compatibility and harmony with adjacent and nearby properties. And just says accordingly, it is ordered in a judge that the special use permit for the 2.03 acre portion of the property identified as a portion of parcel 14305-000, all within a commercial zoning district, is hereby approved, subject to the approval of site plan 2303.
Our planner pretty much went through it.
Yes, yes.
We talked about it yesterday, so.
Yes.
I went through it, and Miss Connie took pretty detailed data, guys, but I see the problem. Concerns.
Make a motion.
If you would need a motion to approve it, if y'all are up there.
I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit, SUP 2302.
Second.
Second.
Good. All in favor of approving the special use permit, SUP 2302, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Number two, consideration of site plan, SP 2303, concept development.
Again, concept development is on behalf of Blueberry Hill Properties. This is the site plan for the construction of a dollar general retail store within a commercial district on approximately 2.03 acres located on the same parcel, 14305-000. And it's got the items that are required and it's just got the statements in here that it is in accordance with the town's land development code. The sufficiency of statements on ownership and control of development are hereby found to be in order. The proposed use and associated development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all regulations and standards of the land development code. Will have general compatibility and harmony with the issues. The necessary public infrastructure is available to the proposed site and the proposed use or development will have screening and buffers of such dimension, type and character to improve the compatibility and harmony with adjacent and nearby properties. Is also subject to the approval of all state, regional, and county permits as required. The site plan 2303 for 2.03 acre portion of property identified as a portion of parcel 14305-000, all within a commercial zoning district, is approved, subject to the approval of the special use permit 2302 and conditioned upon the terms set forth in Exhibit A attached here to it. Exhibit A has the conditions for the site plan approval attached to it. They are pretty boilerplate and have been made available, the main one being that we have required that be water line that serves the whole home part behind the development. It will now be moved to the west side of the property, down to the west boundary line and a tap there at US 27 with an easement being given for maintenance. Prior to that, the water line ran straight through the property alongside of a retention pond and if something would have happened to the water line, we would not have had access to that water line for maintenance purposes.
This is what.
Yes.
Should we put the, in the poll, the, um, check out lines and.
Yes, yes, now, item number six, just approval to the subject of all state, regional, and county permits, and that means Swanford War Management District, DOT for access, et cetera, as well as the county for the building permit. Okay. Now, you're going to be recommending up to the county.
To the county.
Right.
Go ahead, I have questions. There's a motion to approve, um, the SP 2303.
Making a motion to approve the SP 2303.
Second, okay, good, so all in favor of approving the SP 2303, concept development, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Item number five is adjournment, so we will now, our adjourn our planning and zoning meeting, and we will move, make, we will move to our regular town hall council meeting. Say it's February 19th, 2024.
Here, my guest.
Do you want, do you want two of them?
Two.
So you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna call them, okay, would you both propose?
When they come up to you.
All right, now, now we will now open the town hall council meeting, we will get a roll call.
Mayor Frazier.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilwoman Fleming, here. Councilman Coon.
Here.
Councilwoman Florence.
Here.
Town Attorney.
Here.
Town Clerk, here.
All right, item number one, addition, deletion, change of approval of agenda, I know we have one.
We're going to delete item number seven, under item number four, number 17.
We'll move this to item number.
Yes.
Which one? Number 17. 417, item 417.
FMIT insurance premium.
All right, so I made a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Good.
Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, item number two, minute meetings, approval of January 17th.
Making a motion to approve the minutes for the approval of minutes from January 17th, 2024 meeting.
All in favor of approving the January 17th, 2023 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, item number three is, this is the public participation, I've got two slips here, I guess is all we got talking tonight. Public participation, so I will now open it up, and I guess Mr. Miller, you want number two and three, so the floor is yours. And now we got minutes somewhere, so. We got clocked, Doc. I got my phone with my bags, so it's time.
Go ahead, Miller. I'm going to speak for two hours, thanks. Item number two and number three, I guess they're coming up next, that's the annexation or the contraction of the subdivision that's over there, Mr. Ford subdivision, right down the block. I just have a couple of questions for this. Number one, I'm not in favor of it because I believe the traffic and everything else is going to affect everybody at the south end of the county, and once the town loses control, we'll have no control, and as an example for that, I would just point out the traffic study that the town did, which was inconsequential, and if you guys didn't insist on a traffic study, there never would have been one, and I would suggest to you that in many instances, that's the kind of work that the county does. You'll all recall that they had the whole county down here a couple of times, and assistant county manager, all this was just about a green sign. The only reason that the county was supposed to take over the engineering and development of that subdivision was because all of the confusion that anybody in Florida driving past that subdivision would have seen a green sign and they would have called the county because they would, the signs would have confused them. I don't believe that's the case, that was bogus, it was engineering issues, that if the town kept control over that, the developer would have been responsible for the engineering fees, and the county does it, the county will take it over. So I think it's wrong because everything that happens in Fort White affects the south end of the county, and my other question is, if you look at this statute, 175.051, who pays? You guys pay for this thing, the town, council paid for this thing upfront, paid your attorney right there, you paid, what you paid, your other engineers, what you paid, these consultants, and now you're going to have to advertise, if you go through with this, you're going to have to run, and that's expensive, an electricity reporter because they're the only name in town as far as being, we were able to advertise, you're going to have to pay to get an ordinance written, who's going to pay your attorney to do that, and who's going to write the ordinance? You know, if you go to court, Mr. Lander will tell you, you go to court, you make a motion, you got to provide all your own stuff, the opposition doesn't provide all the stuff. So, if Mr. Ford, well, at least Ford, whoever the developer is, it's both of them, we all know that, it's, it's just silly, uh, who's going to pay to do all that? Is it going to be the taxpayers of Fort White, is it going to be taxpayers of Columbia County, is it going to be Commissioner Ford? So I think, at the very least, if you guys make the ill-conceived choice to just give them back the property, at least they should have to pay all the expenses, which means advertising in the paper, paying a month for two items.
But you, you go back six minutes?
No, I'm done, I'm just, I was just saying, I'm okay, ready to wrap it up. What I'm saying is, is that you guys need to think about this carefully and see what you're going to do, and make it fair for everybody if you do it. Thank you for your question.
That's all I have to do, public participation, do you have any more? Do you have any more?
No, no, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll go ahead and close, public participation at this time, item number three, we'll, we'll move to item number four, new business, which is proclamation, Mayor Frazier, you, you want me to read all that, Miss Connie?
No, you can just read the last one.
The last one?
Very last, Mayor Frazier. You want me to read it?
I'll read it. Whereas the town of Fort White demonstrates its support in addressing the problem gambling by raising public awareness through declaring the month of March 2024 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in the town of Fort White, and that's actually a proclamation that I'll, I guess I'll be citing?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a proclamation, so we don't need a motion.
Yeah, all the other items on the proclamation, just give the reasoning behind the proclamation and the supporting that.
I guess my gambling problem, Florida, so.
Yeah.
So I just, we don't need a motion.
You're just issuing a proclamation.
All right, now, I'll move this, number two, request of Lisa Land LLC for contraction of parcel 04063-010.
This was tabled, or, not tabled, but it was brought up at the last meeting and the motion to approve failed by a vote of three to two.
All right, um, I went through everything, after the last meeting, um, I, I spoke to Mr. Ford concerning this matter, and, and some, you know, we, we didn't bring up at the last meeting, when, when Mr. Ford bought his property, there, there's a parcel amount of land that's in the town, that's, that's been in the town for a while, and there's a part of the, that he put into town to make it all on track, so, um, as far as where I'm sitting at in that, guys, and I know we're not able to discuss all this one outside of meetings, public meetings, but where I feel like is fair, and I spoke to Mr. Ford about this, was, um, what if we give back the part that he put into the town? Not the part that was already part of the town, but the part that is not in the town. I feel like that would be a fair trade, and I believe Mr. Ford, he agrees that would be fair. So, that's what I'm asking council tonight to consider, is taking the part that he put out or put back in the town to basically retract that and go back. The next question, which we did not discuss, was what Mr. Miller spoke about, um, uh, there is going to be an expense, and I don't know, I think we and Miss Connie talked about it today, I think it could come up in the range of $1,500, $1,800, so, um, that's something we need to decide, if we decide to turn the land back over. That's my, my take on it.
Now, how does that work with that other parcel that was sold? That was, now, I guess that's on its own parcel?
It's going to, if, if we retract that part, and Miss Connie talked about it today too, it's going to have to go also with the part we turned loose because it's not voting up anywhere to the part that we, the, the part that's been in the town for, for years.
Is that the piece with the household?
Yeah.
What does that entail of putting back the part that was in the county, back in the county, and, and what's a, is there a process for that?
Uh, for contraction, yes, um, and I said, Mr. Miller, if you remarked on it, and I believe there's a copy of the statute in your packet, um, there's a process that we have to go through, it's called contraction.
Like the zoning?
It's a, it'd be a, just like a zoning thing, we have to advertise, we have to have public hearings, have to do new ordinance, uh, so it'd be just like the annexation, but it's just like the annexation in the worst, so go through that process to, to put this property out of the municipality, back into its prior zoning community. And I don't know about the, the house that we're talking about, I don't know where it sits, were you saying that?
It sits on the part that he put into the, to the town. So that's nowhere near the, the line that we, the part, that the old part.
Yeah, so as part of that contraction, that house was.
That was back out, right.
Or, or, is, is the household, is that my, the Jacksons, is that who owns that?
Right.
Okay, all right, so that's what, basically, number three is, is a request, basically, to join with a lease of land proposal and be contracted out of the, so you have the only two people on property, which would be Lisa's land and Jackson's, asking to be contracted out of, out of it.
Right.
So that's, you know, you're not dealing with the, an issue of someone else owning property, who's going to be contracted out of municipality, you know, so that, that makes it a little easier, um, but it doesn't change the process. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Ms. Lisa, how do you feel about that? Rocky, I mean.
Yeah, we're good with that.
Um, this is a map, this is the entire parcel, the section, the way it is now, the line I've drawn here shows what, everything to the west would remain in the town, everything to the east of the line would go out, and this little red square is the Jackson's property, so that shows you about the.
Is, is it, is it numbered right, Miss Lander, the number I said, $1,500, $1,800, is that? That's probably, I don't know what the, uh, I don't know what advertising fees for the, uh, for the reporter are, but, you know, they're, they're all pretty high, so legal advertising, so I would say, I would say somewhere in there, between $1,500, $2,000 is what the town would spend doing this, that would, that would be reasonable. Mr. Ford, let me ask you a question, or Ms. Lisa, would that be an expense that y'all would be willing to split with maybe the Jacksons, or Johnsons, or Jacksons?
Well, I, we'd have talked with them about that, but, uh, but yeah, we would, we could do it, if you could do it together, I'm sure we could work with a payment on it.
Like I said, I think we can come up with a number of $1,500, $1,800 or something.
Well, I'd say whatever it is, I think it's only fair they cover.
Right.
That, whatever it may be.
Yeah, I think it's like, I, I think we talked about it.
I'm sure they'll be, agree with that. What does, I guess, what do you offer?
Two and three, but you, or, you have two, we need to go with two firsts, and we'll hit three at the same.
Well, you can do two and three at the same.
Three at the same.
Yeah, and the motion would be to proceed with the contraction process.
So.
I will make a motion to proceed with a contraction of parcel 04063-010 and 0403-012.
Well, you missed that all the way.
Yeah.
You left the six at zero.
Did retract.
But now, but now you'll have to clarify because 04063-010, right now, includes all of it, so you'll have to clarify that parcel, except the portion that was originally in the town lands, because it was all put together under one parcel number, so if you say one parcel number, then it takes all of it.
So, just do the first one, parcel, and what there's.
So, yeah, but what she's saying is.
The first.
The first one is all hit properly.
Yes.
And we're agreeing to what they're putting, they put into the.
So you just want to say that, that portion of 010.
That was annexed.
That is, is previous. So the 010 is the, is the whole?
04063-010 is the whole 149 acres.
Right, okay, so we need to.
We need to separate it from the parcel that, the part that we actually took in.
Because the other parcel number is gone.
We need to scratch the motion, start over.
Definitely.
Kill that motion and let's start over with a new motion, so, so what, what is the, okay.
It would be parcel number 04063-010, accepting out the portion that was originally in the town of Fort White.
Right, okay, so someone can just adopt what your town clerk said.
Make a motion to adopt what the town clerk just made mention.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, now, listen, listen real quick, so we didn't, here, we didn't hit 012, though. We need to go, we need to do that now, so that needs to be a motion now.
But that's that full parcel name.
That's the one little half acre that was.
That's just that.
Yes.
So we need to motion that, okay, so let's motion, make a motion to retract, yeah, the parcel number 04063-012, right?
I'll make a motion, what, what is this?
Okay, so, second.
Second.
Did you second it?
Yes.
All right, we got a second, so all in favor of contracting parcel number 04063-012, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, all right, so there we go. All right, so number four, first reading of ordinance 2024-01, mobile food vendors.
Ordinance 20, 24-01, an ordinance of the town of Fort White amending the town of Fort White land development code as amended pursuant to an application, land development code 24-01 by the Fort White Town Council, relating to an amendment to the text of the land development code, providing for amending section 3.09.30, titled Mobile Food Vendors, amending ordinance 2021-221 in its entirety, providing several ability, repealing all ordinance in a conflict and providing an effective date. Basically, what we're doing is we're taking away the other ordinance and in the land development code, under section 3.09.30, and putting this ordinance, this is the first reading to put this ordinance into effect.
All right, council, we, we worked really, Miss Connie, for a lot of hours into this, this thing, we congregated up three or four different food truck resolutions from surrounding counties and kind of tried to put one fit Fort White best together, um, with a lot of, you know, restrictions and penalties if, if things are not done in a great way, so, the, I had spoken to Mr. Rubin on the phone the other day, and one of his questions about the ordinance was, is that could he possibly have seating until, what, what time we're thinking of this, 8:00 p.m.? Like, have seating till 8:00 p.m.? Now, not, if you think about it, we have a lot of summer months here, so it's going to be nine o'clock if we go off of daylight, you know, if we, I think, well, we got, it's kind of, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, well, we got pretty much dark, it's dark?
Yes.
Okay, so right now, he's having to close at 5:30 in the summertime, he's closing at 9:30.
Outdoor seating.
Yeah, outdoor seating, right, right.
Outdoor dining.
So I'm, I'm okay with eight o'clock if y'all are seating, but it's going to be daylight, or, it's going to be daylight at nine o'clock anyway, so, and then I think the time that it closes, we got it at 10, is it 10?
10.
10, so they can't serve food after 10, basically, they close at 10, so, I'm, I have no problem with that, I mean, I.
For which it's going to be dark, because it could be eight o'clock, it's the summer month.
Well, I just think we need to set a time, instead of going daylight and dark, and then it affects the business.
So even during the summertime, eight o'clock is eight o'clock.
Right, eight o'clock, eight o'clock. And that's just outdoor dining, now, the, the trucks can stay open until 10 if they want to serve food out the window and take on or whatever, but as far as outdoor dining ends at eight o'clock. That's what we, period, done, all year long, eight o'clock, that's what we discussed on the phone, correct?
Yes.
I, I'm okay with that.
Okay, yeah, sure. Is that including your karaoke and all that stuff too, or that stuff, I mean, where do you differentiate, just for the record, where do you differentiate outdoor dining and then karaoke?
The way this reads, the way this reads is that a food truck park, we have to apply for a special use permit to do anything other than, well, we have to apply for it regardless, and that would take the place of the previous site plan approval that we were looking at. As part of that special use permit, it would be delineated in that special use permit what other activities would be allowed, and that's where they would make the request, you would consider the special use permit as a planning and zoning board, and you would make either approve or make changes to what would be allowed for, for extra activities.
And what we're doing is we're taking that authority out of Miss Connie's hands and we're putting it back on the council, so, so if they turn in a special use permit, it's got to come before the council here to be approved, and then it's going to be a time thing, they need to turn it in, if they know they got something coming up.
But going, but going forward, on the initial special use permit, they would need to submit and request the activities that they want to have in addition to the food trucks.
So they have to, they have to ask for special use permit to have, here, their business enough to, right now, to have their, to have, to do what they're doing right now because they're within somebody's feet of the.
Yes.
Of the, of the, of the initial neighborhood.
Right, and ask on about that.
And in that special use permit, they would list all that to, that they plan on doing.
Yes.
At their property.
Yes.
And then we would prove. And then we would prove or deny that.
And that would do away with the temporary use permit coming in here every week and all, now all of a sudden we want to have plant produce sales and now, you know, it's just been.
So everything would be set in stone. If they want to do something other than that, what's on there, then they would ask for another, a secondary special use.
Yes, and that would have to go before planning and zoning, that is correct.
A lot of this was pulled up at High Springs when they.
Alachua.
Alachua, cause I talked.
And the city of Lake City.
Right, I talked to the young lady over in Alachua and she said they put a lot of time and a lot of lawyer time into their food truck, cause they, they were getting, having some issues. So they put a lot of time and effort into this thing, spent a lot of money on coming up with the ordinance that they had. So it's, uh, it was, it was pretty interesting reading it, so. But this is where we derived this from, Mr. Lancy's help, um, you know, the other food truck ordinances that we had, we compiled information together and it was about what we felt like was the best for White.
If you look at page four, it lists out the items that would, under item number two, it lists out the items that would have to be, um, looked at. And number three says upon approval of by planning and zoning board, special use permit, a development order would be issued stipulating the conditions of operation.
And then once a year, we need a copy of their licenses, their inspections and all that stuff that we'll keep in our house here also. That way we know that any truck that comes on that premises, and there's penalties in here, if a truck is called down there, they don't have, we catch the truck down there and we don't have copies of stuff in here, so they go back to our company.
Where the change, the only change that would take place would be under, um, the food truck park number sixteen, outdoor dining. It currently says outdoor dining ceases after dark, and if you change that, it would say outdoor dining ceases after eight p.m.
Yeah, I'm okay with eight o'clock, so yeah, I mean, I, I just, it's, uh, and, yeah, I mean, and, yeah, I'd be okay with eight o'clock.
I have a question, if it's, if it's possible to ask please, in regards to the special use permits, um, I know my.
Yeah, let's get to the voting, so.
Back to him. Groups such as Dana Pasquarella. T A S Q U A R E L L A.
Howard Butcher, no.
And the special use permits, and the reason that I'm asking about this is because of the, uh, for instance, the Fort White Elementary School PTO has their meetings over there. Because no parents come during the day, so they try to have them in the, in the evening. Now, what if a meeting needed to be called and they were not able to get in here to get permission from you all for us to have meetings, literally have six people sit together? We have to have a special use permit for that? And so they have to go before you and get a month in advance?
Well, it's not gonna be a month in advance.
Well, what, the way to combat that would be on the special use permit initially, you would have in there, uh, specific approval for meetings of up to X number of people that have to happen between the hours of X and Y and that type of thing.
I think that what we're confusing is the terms of the special use permit and terms of temporary.
Right.
When we develop a special use permit, it will be an ongoing sort of umbrella that this business has, it's an operator that will have, and will have to develop in cooperation. A number of things, the type of things that humans object.
Yes.
The things that will fall under, that will have to come back in front of the council will be things that were on that list, I would say, someone, I'm just trying to think of something.
Well, I'd like some clarification, like what, under what, what items are, okay, this is under the umbrella, and what items.
They would, they would.
They list on the initial list.
So they can put the seed library, it can go there.
If they put it on the initial list.
But up until today, they had to come here for every little thing. Like five people meet together, they got to get a special use permit.
That's why we're trying to fix, that's why we're trying to fix it.
Okay, but well, I'm just trying to get that in there that it's a little ridiculous that, you know, for five or six adults to get together, that we have to have a permit? And what if something came up that they needed to do something in a hurry to get together and they couldn't get here in the time for the meeting to happen? So I just wanted to write that.
That's what we're.
Thank you, thank you.
My name is, I'm a student. I'm getting confused.
Yes, ma'am.
As to food truck, what the food truck can do and versus what's collected, all of this other stuff that, that's being brought in. I've never been, um, it's not been explained to me, okay, they want, okay, they want to do karaoke, they want to have meetings, they want to have other stuff. To me, that's completely separate from the food trucks, what we do, get out there, resell food to the public. So I just need some clarification as to what is it that we're trying to do? Are we trying to combine a food truck with the, cause that's all, all this other stuff? Because if so, I would think that's right, according to the state.
Right.
Cause the state has their regulations and then for the food trucks.
Thank you, Ms. Fad. Got a point. This is a, this is a food truck park. Right?
The re, the, can I explain the difference? The difference of a food truck park is if the particular property has more than one food truck on it. There are requirements that they have to meet. Because it's in a commercially zoned area, a food truck park can have ancillary uses, additional uses for the, um, commercial general zoning. And these are the items that they will have to ask for on their special use permit. And the reason for that is because not all things are allowed. It has to be on that usage for commercial general zoning, okay? If there's something like selling produce, um, you know, that's not really a type of use for a commercial general usage. That would be an ag usage, to sell produce out of a produce stand type thing. The guy over here is grandfathered in. Two thousand thirteen was when it all changed. So a food truck park is to put in requirements if they're gonna have more than one food truck. You're kind of a unique in that, you're grandfathered in. Because you are commercial.
I'm living grandfathered in.
No, no, I know, you paid to get your zoning done and all that kind of stuff, but what I'm saying is that your operation is grandfathered in now, okay? Cause you've been there for quite a while, okay? So they want to do a little, a combination of things. They want to sell food, but they also want to have some commercial general uses going on with this particular, um, piece of property that they.
So is it X amount of food trucks per parcel?
Yes, maximum of four per acre. So they have right at a half acre, they're gonna be limited to. And the uses would be.
What is it? I don't agree with that.
This is the gas warning. That's not even what you have on here.
The special uses are gonna be to allow. The special uses are gonna be to allow things other than just strictly selling the food. But it has to be within the, the fines of commercial general zoning, which is what they are.
So it's just the first reading, what happens next? Again?
Yes.
Next month?
Gets advertised, wants to advertise, then it's not.
And then it's final after that?
With the change, that would be, if you so want that change made.
So how do you make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the.
To approve it?
To move, to, to move to the second reading with the change of the outdoor dining to eight p.m.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the ordinance to go to the second reading, uh, two zero two four dash zero one.
Good.
And to change the, to change. And to change it to, uh, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Outdoor, outdoor eating until eight o'clock.
All right, so motion on the table.
Yeah, one question. If eight won't, if, you're saying it limited to two on the half acre?
Yes.
For a special use permit, can they have more than two?
No.
More than one time a year? There's no other read, there is no other way they can put more than two down there?
Buy more land.
Buy more land, yeah. The two, they are limited to size and they're limited to the two per half acre because of the, a half acre is a very big. You got tables set up, you got chairs set up, you got a pole barn set up.
I'm, I'm asking, I mean, they could do it, I'm asking, is, is, are they able to do it with a special permit?
Yeah, it'd be a temporary permit at that point.
Yeah, but I mean, that would be a special permit.
To have a special.
Could you, that's, Lancy, could you override your ordinance with a, a permit or ordinance? That's something that I want to look into in our land development code, if we could, that's a good term, override.
Right.
Initial action, I mean, it's gonna be what it is. Special uses, uh, are defined, okay? So the, the types of things that these folks are, can do in addition to selling food are gonna be defined, generally defined, but the things that Ms. Connie's talking about, about the number of vehicles, food trucks, or whatever you want to call them, uh, is gonna be pretty, pretty well defined. And so I don't know how we're, how we can get around it. We've talked about it, look at it, and I can look into it. That's like, I'm gonna come back and do this again. I would encourage, I think what's happened is I sit here and we talk about it collectively, I think for the entire two years or whatever I've been here. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm talking to y'all, but I'm, I'm projecting my voice back this way, that I don't know if the collective at some point has, the folks who own the collective at some point, have ever presented something that says, this is what we want to do, A, B, C, D, E.
Right.
Um, and I think, and, and maybe they have at some point, but I just heard one of the gentlemen back here say, well, I don't agree with this, this two, this two thing, two, two food trucks. I would think that would be something that would have already come out, that they, that they would have been agreeing. So, so we don't get here to these meetings and accomplish nothing because we just, we realize here at the meetings that we don't have any type of agreement. Now, we could, we could come to a point where we don't have an agreement, and you guys are gonna vote, well, they could live with it or not live with it, and, you know, go, go do whatever they need to do to protest it, um, if they don't agree with it. But it would probably be helpful to the council if there was something comprehensive from the applicant that said, this is what we want. We want X number of vehicles, we want to do this, we want to do that, we want to do these, these times, these days, et cetera, um, and, and see how those things fit within our land development. It would be, probably be a lot quicker to move the same or some matter.
We have, we, but we. Well, hold on a minute, because this, this does not necessarily, this does not have the collective name on it. I realize that they are generally what we're talking about here, cause we only have one food truck park. But this is, this is something that goes into our, our codes. Okay, so this would apply to the next individuals that come here and, and do what they want to do, and do, and do something similar. So this is not specific to the collective, this is specific to the town of Fort White.
Well, that's what, what they have to do on their special use permit. They need to put forth what all they want, and then it will be up to the town council to decide what they're gonna allow them to do, because it says in here, remember, I read in here that there would be a, um, special use permit that would list out the rules for operation. Can I do the same thing? Pardon me, can I use names? Yes, ma'am, you could make a food truck park on your property.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I'm sitting here, and I, you said it's supposed to be two food trucks down there at that place, and I'm just sitting here, and I, and I know I've seen, I've seen more than two food trucks under that tent before.
Yes, ma'am, these are the new requirements. These are the new requirements.
Okay, so now, okay.
There's, you know, there's, that, and the reason for that.
That's what kind of started all of this, cause everybody was getting out of hand, so.
And the reason for that is you have to take into consideration on a half acre with two food trucks, you got, if you have outdoor dining, that takes up space. You got bathrooms, that takes up space. You got parking, that takes up space. So two on a half acre, I don't think is that amazing, but that's up to y'all to decide. I'm just telling you what the logic is behind that.
Well, I think that, I'm running justice, and I ain't got nothing to hold you this right. They've been doing this for almost two years, and we've seen three, four food trucks up there, and now today, they down to two. So somewhere, somebody had eleven, knew three out of four, and now you're gonna go down to two, that's going backwards instead of forwards, in my opinion, and I understand space, it's still the same space that they've been operating out of, obviously, for the same two years. So if it was a problem now, probably should have been a problem two years ago. We've been, we've been working. I'm saying, I tell you, we've been working on something.
Yeah, Mr. Lancy, as Mr. Lancy is, he feels like it's been six years now we've been talking about this. So this is where it's finally come to an end.
Man, Warren O'Neal was right.
No, no, what I'm saying is, somewhere, I know the town goes out and looked and says, we see four food trucks up here, so somewhere within two years before now, they should have said, based on that half acre, we don't have two food trucks up here, so they should have already definitely known going by now that it's down to two, cause they probably go shut that up, cause if they can have a two, they, they might have.
We're also just curious as to how this two.
Mr. Rubin, you said.
Uh, we would like verification as why two was selected. If we've been operating this whole time with three to four, with designated pads, we've never had an issue, we've never had any sort of issue, we've never had, uh, anybody called out, we've never had anybody have an accident, um, so we're curious where this two per half acre is coming about.
This is part of what we've been working on with High Springs and city of Lake City, adopting their codes, cause at one of the last meetings, we said, we don't have a food truck, what, what we call this?
Resolution.
Food truck park.
Food truck, or eight adds, was a food truck bylaws. And that's how we were working on, so we said we're gonna start working on this here, and that's where we're at now. Because that's what the city of Lake City and the city of High Springs is doing.
Alachua.
Alachua.
Alachua has a food truck ordinance.
So we're working with them to help us get where we're at.
Well, I would like to feel as though the town is working with us. Now, we've been already contributing a lot to this time. They had no issue.
Everybody does, I'm gonna stop you. This is, you know, you've been coming up here since I've been on the board for a while, and it's like we're throwing things against the wall to see what sticks as your business plan. That's your job. Our job is to regulate this and abide, make sure these rules are being followed. So like they just said, you come up with a list for the special use, bring it up here, we're still going through this, this is just a reading. Where it got adopted, now you know. Let's have that stuff written down and then we go from there, you know? But I mean, two months from now, we don't want a list of eighteen, and now we got another list of twenty coming here, you know? Y'all figure out, y'all.
Well, I don't think it's that far fetched to, to be claiming that we want to be able to operate with the same amount of trucks that we've been operating with this whole time.
Well, you know, two, there has not been four down there consistently at all times. They have come and gone. The two that were there consistently were the blue truck and the white truck, and those two were there for quite some time. And those are the only two that were there. The other, occasionally on a weekend, there'd be another trailer come in or whatever, but as far as actual food trucks go, those two were the two that were there.
We all used to have a special permit.
Right, but you know, it takes two of us to work together. You can't have food trucks down there without licensing like you had, and then. You can't have food trucks down there without licensing like you had, and then Connie's gotta go down there and check it, because people's getting sick, and say, shit, I don't know.
I didn't know they didn't have a license.
There was no...
There's no...
There's no... Why are they there?
Thank you, thank you.
What is it? That is liable. You're saying people got sick off their trucks?
And they have the licensing, they basically... That's what is going on.
Wow.
Okay, that, that's, see, that's where we're at. We're trying to work, but then we're going back and forth, I mean...
Well, I'm just thinking, I don't want you guys to continue to represent a, a, you know, there was no proof of that, there was no reports.
I think what Mr. King said earlier is, is probably the most important thing, is that it seems like we keep ending up here having discussions about what you guys wanna do, and you can, and now that you're here, I can speak to you directly, if you're okay. Um, if, if you're not happy with two, then, then make a proposal, and, and the council may agree with it or not. Make a proposal.
That would be part of it.
So, so we don't have to figure out when we get here and do this, make a proposal, put it in writing, give it to Ms. Connie, sit down, I don't know if you have partners, whatever, sit through, it's just you, make a proposal, put it in writing, get it ready.
Did you, did you take time to read this? Oh, yes, right, yes. Did you see the part, um, where it says, about two trucks per acre?
Well, I saw it, it was just four, I didn't see the number two in there.
Per acre.
Correct.
Two trucks.
Four per, four per acre, logically, you have a half acre.
Logically, you got a half acre, so you go, oh, so, yeah, so, I mean, that's, anyway, I think that's, that's, let's just leave it.
Well, again, I think, uh, leading over to, uh, Councilman Florence's, uh, point, this is for general, like, food trucks, and if you want anything different, that's what you submit in your special use permit, because a special use permit is what will be the rules for you to operate under.
Alright.
Thank you.
Counsel, um, you know, unfortunately...
We have a motion.
Unfortunately, when you're gonna open a business up, you have to find out the rules and regulations, or you're, it was put in a plan. Okay, here's what I'm doing. Will this meet the guidelines of what I'm doing? It's like, you know, I, I used this in an illustration last time, I'm opening a dealership up in Chieftain right now, I had to go to the Chieftain, to Lady County, and find out what they expect, what they, what they expect me to do. Here's my business plan, what do y'all expect out of me? And then they told me, and I went and followed their business plan, and I got my license, and we're, okay? So, I agree with Mr. Jason, that, that, you know, this ain't, this is not directed toward the collective, it's directed toward food trucks. I mean, what, it's like it's crossed, what if it's another food truck? What, I mean, we have a resolution now that'll regulate the food trucks, and that's why we worked on it. We put a lot of time and effort, I know Mr. Rinsy and Ms. Connie's put a lot of time and effort into it, so, um, so, as the motion sits on the table, I believe Mr. Jason made the motion.
He didn't make the motion, I, I didn't get a direct counsel from my question, of course, but, is there any way they can apply for any kind of permit on the special use? Do you come here, they, they could have more than two?
I, I don't know, I don't know that we can answer that tonight, but I don't think it prejudice, uh, prejudices us from moving forward, because we're not voting tonight to approve. We need, I need to get some clarification about what we could do on a temporary basis, which, which Ms. Connie and I'll, and maybe we should get together and work out before the next one.
My, so the motion on the table, it stands, do I have a say on the motion that's on the table?
Not a say.
Do I have a say? So, all in favor of approving...
For the second reading.
For the second readings of the food truck resolution with the changing of...
The time?
Time to eight o'clock. See?
Number, what's the first number of trucks?
No, it's the first reading.
First reading, first reading number of trucks, and we're, he's gonna find out about it, if you, so, um, so all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Alright, as that goes to second reading, so, we can work out the difference of the special use or whatever we need to do for the food truck. Okay, alright, where am I at?
Number five.
Alright, number five, RW parking suggestions ordinances, um...
Just what we talked about today.
Yes, me and Connie's talked about this today, guys, this is the, um, this is where the right away parking and stuff, and the business and stuff, um, commercial businesses only, basically, um, you know, I, Mr. Lenders, I, I actually told Ms. Connie, I think what we might do is probably do a lease agreement on that property with the, with the business owners, and then have it covered under insurance policy. So, that, that's the direction I think we...
Homeowners and churches would be exempt, and this is just for commercial businesses, because they're day in, day out, a lot of traffic in and out, that kinda thing. Churches are on weekends, only residences, of course, if they don't have anywhere else to park, they have to park in front of their house, blah, blah, blah.
And that's only on one commercial businesses that has the problem.
Yes.
So, if, if they don't have a problem, that's fine, but if they have a problem...
Right, if they have parking lots, it doesn't apply.
Right, right. So, um, that, that's kinda my thought process, so... That, that's not a mad thought process, and I believe when we first started talking about this, I had pulled out a right away agreement, then another that's probably used that we could plagiarize for hours, um... It's a serious one, a lot of... Um, so, yeah, I, I think that's it.
We could get my draft together for the next meeting for consideration.
I think that's a good compromise.
There you go.
Okay.
So, there's, there's the direction, so if we can get something together, and we can kinda approve it, so...
Wouldn't we, wouldn't we be just as liable as the homeowner, as it wouldn't be a business? Wouldn't Towne Fort White be just as liable?
Yeah, it's one thing, I mean, it, it, I mean, you, you will be, that's why it's called a compromise.
Yeah.
Definitely got through building.
Yeah, well, the thing is, is someone sent a notification to all the residents of Fort White, and said, hey, we gotta cover this lease agreement, you know, I mean, um, the traffic in and out is not nowhere near the, the traffic is in out of business, you know what I'm saying? So, and what's the chances, I mean, if something happened, what are we gonna do, but we are still taking a chance, so, I mean...
Mitigating risk.
So, let's look, let's let him prepare something, let's look at it, and we gotta go, there, y'all agree with that?
Alright, um, date, Mr. Kitten, this is yours, date of spring, yourself, I said late April.
I'm guessing. Y'all ain't got no date on here.
I just said late April, that's what I suggest, but you might say, might be...
I was a little guy, so I really heard the bird, 'cause it gets hot.
You wanna know March?
Well, the reason, Easter this year is the thirty first of March, so, April sixth, thirteenth, twentieth, or the twenty seventh?
Always business, perfectly clear, always business.
April sixth.
Perfectly clear, always that is.
April sixth is. Let's go, April sixth, we're moving to the next one. Approval of amendment six, the loan agreement, WW one two oh six, a grant agreement.
No, you skipped seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, approval of contract when they were given, and that's, guys, that's, we do this every year, so it's the same thing we're...
This is the contract for them to handle the afterlabor assessment for the garbage.
And we do that, so I just need a motion to approve. We do this, like citizens, we, it was set aside in mayor, we use these guys, so...
Make the motion to approve the contract that they were giving us at Nickerson, for legal services, on the town's annual solid waste assessment program.
Second.
Got second, so, um, all in favor of approving the contract, favor of Jill at Nickerson, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Alright, number eight, approval of amendment six, the loan agreement, WW one two oh six one oh, this is that grant agreement that we did, um, I, listen, with the, the council's not allowed to talk about this, this thing's gonna cost us four thirty-nine fifty-six semi annual, that's that long, we took out twelve-five, wasn't it?
Yes, to do the sewer feasibility study.
Yeah, and with the town's permission, let's just pay them all.
We all okay with that?
What's it?
Twelve thousand five hundred, and, and, we don't, we, we owe it, but we don't, we gotta make payments on it, so, just pay off, we don't, y'all, if everybody's okay with that, so, if y'all are, yeah, just need a motion to approve that, if y'all are okay with it.
I'm making a motion to, uh, pay in full the loan agreement, WW one two zero six one zero, uh, for the grant agreement, NSH one two zero six one four.
So, all in favor of the motion, uh, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Alright, number nine, approval of contract with Citix Plus to provide social media retention, archiving assistance for public record requests containing no such, uh, Ms. Connie, whatever it's today, and I, me personally say fully no, because it's gonna cost the town three thousand dollars to do a Facebook page, and I mean, on a Facebook page anyway, so, so, y'all okay with that? Um, I think that was just, yeah, I think that was, yeah, that, that's...
Different intervention, I think.
Y'all wanna do a Facebook page?
I think we do, but I mean, we figured that out.
Yeah, well, it's three thousand, well, but this, what they're doing is they're actually having to archive the stuff, you know, it's on Facebook.
Every comment is a matter of public record that gets put on a Facebook page now. So, if you're gonna have a Facebook page, you gotta have a way to archive all the comments and the, uh, posts that are done, and the town does not have the capability to do that themselves, and so, if you're gonna have a Facebook page, you're gonna have to, uh, hire a service such as this.
Y'all okay with that?
A Facebook page.
A turn of your...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, it's all, all of...
So, either do this, or you don't have a Facebook page.
Yeah, I, I, I just, well, it's not only the three thousand dollars upfront cost, you know, you gotta do it monthly, it's a monthly fee, and then there's a...
The annual fee would be three thousand.
Yeah, and then you, annual fee of three thousand dollars, and I mean, so every year we paying three thousand dollars for a Facebook page, and I, I just don't think, I think it'd be, we need money more places than Facebook pages, and so, y'all okay with that?
Motion.
Can we just, can we give a motion or scratch it?
No, yeah, if you're not gonna do it, then I don't give you a motion.
Scratch it, just gonna scratch it, so, scratch, number nine.
Deny.
Deny. Number ten, approval of quote for surveying and marking of grades and old section of Fort White Cemetery.
We have two proposals, I sent it out to three, but I never got a, uh, response from the third. The first was Mark Durand out of Lake City for seventeen thousand dollars, the second one here is from Scott Brett for sixty-eight seventy-five. We spent approximately sixty-five hundred doing, having the rest.
That's close, so that's a real close.
Make a motion to approve quote for surveying of Fort White Cemetery.
For Scott Brett?
Yes.
For Scott Brett?
Yes, for Scott Brett.
Second?
Got second, so, uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Alright, number eleven, approval of quote for inspection of Fort White, now, is this, uh, the Ford, um, they've been a part of Fort White for a long, long time, that's where a lot of people went to school at, um, the school board has, has finally gotten back with us, and they want to, Ms. Giddens, and, um, what's that, what were your names?
Megan Lou.
Megan, oh, sorry, um, they're wanting to know the Towne Fort White, how we intend to take care of it and all this, um, we gotta explain that to them, but it came up that, my son went to school there, he went in that building, and they had to actually move it, move him from out of that building back to another school, uh, classroom, because it had mold in it one time, and, um, they said they fixed that, but now I've got some, some people told me, said they put a cap on it. So, I don't know how much it's gonna cost us if we take it over, so I want to do an inspection, which I told Megan and Ms. Giddens, that we would do an inspection on it and get back with them, to make sure that it wasn't gonna be some kinda, us taking over a problem. Okay, so, we're gonna get a full inspection with y'all's approval, to do an inspection on the building before we take it over, okay? As long as the state comes back and finds, then we'll, we'll, we'll take it over.
It's fourteen thousand square feet, um, the building is, I got two quotes, um, one from Highmark Inspections, in your packet, and he lists out, uh, in great detail of what all he was inspect and cover. The other, um, was Virgil, the, uh, from Above and Beyond, um, he said he was very familiar with the property, and they have been in it, uh, several times. Above and Beyond is thirty-five hundred dollars, and the, uh, Highmark Inspections was a little higher, uh...
Thirty-one twenty.
Yes.
What's this gonna tell us if we don't like it was, or...
We don't like, yeah, we, I don't, I don't wanna take over a building and we're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars, you know what I'm saying, it's over three hundred. Well, our goal is, is to move our office and hopefully the sheriff's office, all that, down there to that building, as long as it's, it's, you know, it's okay.
Well, I can tell you, it's, it's got mold in it, it's been, been had mold in it, it's gonna have mold in it.
Yeah.
I can tell you that, I can tell you that.
Yeah, mold in it.
Uh, I can tell you that, 'cause ever since I was working there, it had mold in it, and it's got mold in it, it's gonna have mold in it. I can tell you that.
Well, that's what my question is, you know, if it does, then what do you mean?
Well, we had, we, at that point, we probably had to give us, somebody to give us a price of what it costs. You can, but you don't have any grants, Mark.
Is that still what you...
Working, how many years old?
Yes.
But we could probably use...
The government's doing the grants for the trains and stuff, and who's that, is that already more system or not?
It is with the state, not with the federal.
I mean, it has to start with an inspection.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you have to start somewhere, so...
Yeah.
We catch you.
So, guys, do we have, we have a motion, can we go ahead, anybody have a motion to approve the inspection fee?
How much, how do you...
Uh, one was thirty-five hundred, the other, uh, was thirty-nine twenty.
Right, but one inspection fee includes one.
I'm saying, if you wanna do inspection, what are you gonna do there?
I mean, they're gonna do, if they're gonna do it, if you're not gonna...
Right, but we have inspection...
Well, no, but if it comes back, I mean, I wanna know what else, I mean, for the board, I wanna know what else is wrong with the building, if it's just some old, and we don't know it. Because they said that they just put it on, they just kinda started halfway patched it, they didn't do a full, I've talked to, other people said, no, we done pulled through the...
I just wanna make...
So, I don't know if they did pull them through the thing, I'm just hearing, hearing from them, so I didn't hear what they did, and if it's not that bad, then we can take it over, that's kinda my, my mindset, I'd like to have that, for the family, we can have it.
I don't, so, I wanna do a call, I wanna be able to do it.
I don't know, what about... There is a problem, there is a problem.
It's just another guy, those inspections, and he just...
Right, but there's nothing here.
I know, he just said over the phone, he said, I know what needs to be done, I'll do the inspection.
So, we're gonna go with Highmark?
Uh, Highmark to me was more professional, they listed out everything, they, they contacted me, they did a full proposal here, so, um, what I can do is I can call this gentleman from Highmark and ask him if he will give the price of the other thirty-five hundred.
I mean, I'd pay four hundred more dollars for that pamphlet and this piece of notebook paper, you know what I mean?
Yep.
I, I make a motion to approve a quote for inspection for Highmark Inspection, second.
All in favor of approving, uh, inspection for Highmark for thirty-nine twenty, um, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And Ms. Connie, see if, see if you'll go down to the thirty-five hundred.
I will, okay.
Number twelve, approval of contract to provide cleaning services to Town Hall, uh, Town Hall and Fort White Community Center for Glenn's Floor Care.
Yes, the company we had prior to, um, is no longer interested in cleaning for us, so we went out and we called several other places, and the best one we got was from Glenn's Floor Care out of Lake City, and when we looked it over, um, this is the one that we would recommend, in addition to, um, cleaning, uh, they will also do the floors, the wax recommend, in addition to, um, cleaning, uh, they will also do the floors, the wax and stripping of the floors, we've been doing that twice a year, and it was costing fourteen hundred dollars each time. He is willing to do it for nine, nine fifty, also, um, which is, which is a savings of six hundred and fifty dollars each time, so it'd be thirteen hundred dollar savings. Um, also, he's willing to, like, if we have somebody that walks out and doesn't clean up and we keep their deposit, he goes in and he will clean that up for seventy-five dollars. So in, in essence, uh, it's, it's a better contract, it's a better, uh...
That's seventy-five dollars for the whole building, or is that just seventy-five dollars for the...
Seventy-five dollars for the building.
Why does it say two hundred and fifty up there?
It's two hundred and fifty per normal cleaning. If we need an additional cleaning because somebody doesn't clean up after themselves, it would just be an additional seventy-five, but we already collect a hundred and fifty of the deposit.
So we pay, so we're gonna pay two hundred and fifty dollars every month, way back to us.
Two fifty, yes, which we, which we do now, which we work. This isn't, this isn't, uh...
Is that the same price?
Yes.
Same price, she's...
It's the same price, yes. It's the same price that we were paying before.
I make a motion to approve contract to provide cleaning services for Town Hall of Fort White.
And the community center.
And the community center for, um, Glens Floor Care, second.
All in favor of approving the contract, clean service for Town Hall and Fort White, but Glens Floor Care, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Number thirteen, approval of social media costs of the town of Fort White. This is...
This was a result, this was a result of Civic Plus contacting the, uh, about the Facebook, um, retention, et cetera. They gave us a boilerplate social media policy, and said it would be a good idea if we had one, so I went through and I needed, uh, pertinent to the town of Fort White, and, um, I'll let you just expound on whether you believe it's necessary.
Is this something, is this something necessary?
A lot of municipalities have one, school board has one, um, you know, so, but those are also folks that I know that have one, have a Facebook page and have, you know, social media presence and all that. We don't have one, so, you know, is it something that we may need in the future, maybe do it right now? Or we really don't have, we don't have a social media presence.
Guys, okay, so everybody's got it, okay.
Right, but this also includes your personal social media, so if you get into a dispute with somebody, right, they could take what you say and, and, you know, make it a record, essentially. If you include, I read through this, if you include certain things, if you dictate something to happen at this meeting tonight on social media, that can be considered public record that day.
Sure, and I, I represent, uh, Gilbert County in their labor law, and I'm not the county attorney, but I represent them in their labor law and all that stuff. We've dealt with that stuff with employees, uh, you know, who are, it's always the county putting stuff about county business on social media, and kinda stepping outside, of course, you know, they have their own lives, you can, you have a right to have your own personal life, but, but you can't cross the line, you know, between, so that, that's what that's trying to express.
The thing is, is long as you have awareness that, I mean, I, I don't, it's gonna be on all stuff on my Facebook, you know what I'm saying, so if you do it, you know, you could be, to me, it'd be under the sunshine.
Channel.
Yeah, that's what I would think, I mean, so, that'd be on you, you know what I'm saying, so not the town, so. All right, all right, Ms. Connie, we'll, if, if we, if we, uh, start getting employees, we start having some problems, I can revisit that, so... All right, number fourteen, approval of SP 2303 submitted by Concept Development Incorporated Site Plan, um...
This is just the formal approval of what the plans will be recommended.
I'm making a motion to approve, uh, SP 2303 submitted by Concept Development.
Second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. And the local agreement with Columbia County Creek, it's, it's W order authority, um...
We change.
We never had a formal vote.
Yeah, we, we just wanna know where, 'cause I mean, I, I keep getting asked, maybe where, where does the council stand on, on us doing interlocal, or are we just gonna continue doing this, or is that they're doing, what, I mean, what along, you know, so I, I'm one guy, so I, I can't answer that, so that's why we put it there.
Well, last meeting that we discussed, I believe, talking about the other Lady County Gilchrist, whoever has a interlocal or whatever, but it doesn't, I don't remember.
We, we, I don't know one thing that we talked about, especially before, one thing we talked about was, um, did some of the other municipalities, were they part of a broader authority? The ones that I talked to were not, um, they're, they're part of, you know, and work with the rural water development folks, um, but, you know, Fann Springs is not, um, Town across city's not, you know, they have their own, run their own water, um, but, of course, there are some that are part of, of authorities, but, you know, I, there's at least two right here locally, um, that do their own thing, their own water, and their own, whatever, and they have, they have assistance, you know, from, from the state, from rural water, they're not part of a broader authority.
I just need to know what we wanted to get, I mean, 'cause I keep getting asked, Al, but where, where we at?
I know there was a lot of giving up properties and sites that didn't seem to be a good idea to put that in the authority instead of keeping it the town, but you utilizing it as the authority? You know, I mean, I'm not in any kind of agreements with your local property, that the town owns to join it, but, I mean, we need to figure out what we're gonna do, because we need water and sewage in this town, so, uh, how do we make that happen?
Yeah, as of right now, we're going back to county, one hundred percent, as of right now, the county still one hundred percent doing the water.
Yeah.
This, this one, this is, we, we wanna do an interlocal with building and water authority, or do we not? 'Cause I, I don't, I, I don't know.
So I just need to know from y'all, something else we need to bring back up and talk about we can, I mean, I, I just, we've talked about it several times, so we should all kinda know where we're going with this stuff.
Now, this is to do with the sewage as well, right, or just strictly water?
No, it's both.
Because as I read in here, with...
That'd be doing the sewage and the water.
Right, well, what I was reading upon, on the water, there was a lot of nonsense that did contain to Fort White.
Right.
I wouldn't say nonsense, there's other areas that wasn't ours, you know, so if we, we get into this, it's gonna be all these water plants, we're gonna be help funding, and as of right now, how things been going with the county, if there's five sites, we're gonna be number six.
So, John?
And, and I think the one thing, 'cause that's gonna, we talked about it, but I think that my biggest concern that I've expressed on what I'm, dogging this place, but my biggest , uh, yeah, concern that I have expressed is that the authority will be run by a appointed board, so it won't be you guys, you guys don't have the authority, over the authority, it'll be the appointed board, um, who, who runs it, and takes it out of your hands, and so it's, you know, I know it'll be a portion of folks, the county a portion of folks, and I think you can vote for one vote, but I just, you know, one of the reasons why, you know, y'all put me here is I do have some experience in this area of law, and as I have experienced in the past, last time, but I have seen that become a big problem, um, with people, you know, quitting and constantly replacing people, or, or having issues and things like that. There, if there was a workaround around that, I'd be off for it.
Well, I mean, you've talked about, of course, like a HOA going bad.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's the same thing, you can't, you have, we, we pull from a very limited source here in Fort White, we got, what, five hundred, six hundred residents? I mean, who, who, who is gonna, I mean, it's a very minimum fee that it's paying too to be on a...
It's nothing, they're gonna lose money, they're gonna do it just for gas money.
Our, our turnover rate is probably gonna be pretty high, um, so who's gonna be, who's gonna be up there representing Fort White making decisions? That's kinda the mindset I got, so...
Well, I think we need, we need to work on it, we gotta, we need, we need something of this sort to happen, you know, we need, like I said, we need, uh...
Let's do this, let's, let's, let's make a table of this, and then maybe bring it back up, we got had so much stuff.
It's been off the table for a long enough, maybe it's time to think.
Yeah, give you time to think about, maybe Ms. Connie put it on the next meeting and follow me, and then bring it back up. Give, give everybody time to think about, you've pretty much heard, so we need to make a decision, so, we need to make a decision, yeah or no, you, you, you know, and, and y'all...
It's gonna be the water and the sewage, it'll be a combined, whichever way we go.
Can I say one thing, Matt?
Yes, sir.
I heard you say nobody responsible for funding, if you're reading interlocal, Fort White won't be only, won't be responsible for any funding for the utility.
No, no, yeah, county will be taking that most of that deal, so...
Right, that's what I'm saying, we got, uh, we got the opportunity with the county to make this happen, we just gotta, we gotta, we gotta get to a, uh, compromise to make this happen, you know, we, we, we're in the county with us, whatever, we, we gotta do this reasonable, and that's, I, I would love to stress that we're reasonable throughout this town.
Yeah, so let's, let's, if y'all are okay with a table, let's bring it back up and let's talk about it, maybe the meeting, and we got some items, and talk about it, we're gonna make a decision, okay? Is that okay? All right, so number...
As soon as it's clear, man, I mean, I don't know, I heard nothing about the sewage and...
The sewage is included, that will be included, we do the interlocal, Columbia County will be doing it all, yeah. So, we're gonna table, uh, number fifteen and number sixteen, approval amendment number one of grant WS 6046 combined both sewer grants into one.
Yes.
That, yeah.
We have, we have a sewer grant, the first one was for, um, four and a half million, uh, the other one is for five something, so the total is nine point eight five oh million, and that is to fund, uh, phases one and two of the sewer project, it was just easier to combine the two grants into one, rather than having to do, uh, repayment submissions under this grant for this amount, under this grant for that amount, and get confused, et cetera, it was just easier to combine them into one.
That, so, we got, what is it, three phases?
Two.
Two, two.
But that's still not capturing everything in account of Fort White.
No, it is not, that is correct.
Which is the most expensive phase, that covers the treatment plant.
Right, right, right.
Phase one, the spray...
I'm saying, it's, it's what we got kinda talked about now or on paper is a section of Fort White.
So we just need a, a...
But like High Springs, they, they have a big plan, and they only got phase one or so, and then they stopped, you know, so, that, that's a concern of mine, is where's that gonna stop them again, and who's gonna get the short end of the stick? You know, with, uh, opportunity to get away from the separate tank, like these guys here, that takes away a lot of their life, as for a lot of people around here with smaller lives, you know?
Right.
That, that's something I, I like everybody kinda think about as well, you know, because it's not, we're gonna be in the same battle with something else, you're doing them, but not me, so, we're trying to get ahead of something.
Where's another ten minute?
I get it, I get it, no, I get it, I understand.
I just need a motion to approve combining those two, two payouts in the one, instead of just one, so, or two, instead of two.
Well, as of at this moment, the two grants together, does that get you through to the second stage?
No. To the second stage, phase one and phase two.
The two phases, yes.
That'll usually be two phases.
Oh, I guess.
Yes.
But, because first, first of all, we was here a while back, then they gonna have to get some money out of phase two, then you finish up phase one.
That's right.
Or does that leave phase two short too?
They modified, they modified phase two.
And then they brought it back down, yeah, they modified it.
The area that phase two is the...
They did modify it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve, uh, amendment one to grant WG 046.
Now, second, should all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Number eighteen, approval of easement to Columbia County for proposed water lines, I spoke to Mr. Kirby about this last week, um, it's just a easement, they need to run a water line, and I know the water line has been approved to, to run the Fort White, so they just have to have an easement to, to, us to have, to approve the easement.
It's a twenty foot, well, um, easement that'll run down, uh, Stillman Avenue. It'll run down Stillman Avenue, um, from Dorch down to, um, Ellis Street.
Can't run the water line without it, so...
I'll make a motion to give it an easement.
Second. Should all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. We're just two bad guys.
Item number five.
I don't know what, citizen, citizen comments? Oh, yes, citizen comments, do you have any citizen comments, please?
Mayor Frager, I'm a, uh, I'm the board of, uh, Straight From the Heights Industry, we're a nonprofit organization, on first and third wins, we use the community center to give out food, um, we try to clean up, when sometimes we come in there, trash already in there, but we clean up when we leave, um, I don't know, or, or pick the keys up, or, or return the keys, but Ms. Connie had a garbage bag with two paper towels, some gloves, and a child's cup in it, uh, which I thought was, we don't leave food in there, we try to leave it cleaner than what we find it, and we felt, and then nowadays, saying we can't put the tables, we, we, it's a drive up, it's a food giveaway, so we were putting the tables under the pavilion, and cleaning the tables off, putting them back up, and we finishing cleaning them off with Lysol wipes, whatever it takes to clean them up, so now they're saying we can't put the tables, we can't use the tables, so we just trying to figure out what's, you know, what's gonna, we feel, in a sense, we feel like we being harassed, this lady came by and she said, well, I just come in and see how clean y'all keeping it.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Anyway, we, we feel like we being harassed about using the community center.
As far as the tables go, um, I guess this has came up, I, I've heard about this, so, as far as our tables go, if we allow y'all to take the tables outside, we have to allow everybody to take tables outside, and, uh, me personally, I, I don't want the tables back in and out, I know the town paid for those tables, residents of the town paid for those tables, we appreciate what y'all doing, the cause, everything, but as far as the tables going in and out, we cannot have tables taken outside and moved back inside, I mean, it just, I don't see, I mean, what y'all's thought process on this, guys, come in. And, and I, I heard also that y'all were parking up there by the door.
They were, 'cause we had, and, and we, we, you know, didn't, didn't think about it, didn't think it was anything wrong, we have a lot of stuff, a lot of heavy stuff, and it's just us, we unloading the stuff, and get, trying to get as closest to the door as we could, uh, you know, but we, we don't do that anymore since, since that.
And I know we let y'all use the inside of the building, I know the, the young Marines go up there, they do all this.
And I heard that as well, that why we had to go inside, and the young Marines don't, but we do a little bit different, not, they're saying we do more than the young Marines, but we do a little bit different, so we need the inside.
Right, okay, and we, and we, and I think the board approved y'all for being inside the building, that's, I mean, that...
And, and I, I, we appreciate that, but I'm just saying, these two, you know, they just, we feel like we being harassed by them.
Got you.
Can I speak to that?
I, that way, no, we, we...
I mean, you know, just like I said, you know, you get a garbage bag, you, you go up there and you get two paper towels, and we not the only ones that come in, and we were up there one day, and a guy from the county wanted, he, he was supposed to do something up there, and we were there, he didn't realize we were gonna be there, so, I mean, the voting people are there as well, so, it could not have been us, we probably did leave, but it could not have been us, you know, we don't leave food and stuff in there, you know, that kind of stuff, but we, I mean, we clean it up, we, we clean it better than what we find.
Right. All right, we, we, we'll, uh, we'll address that on another meeting, but as far as the tables, they, I mean, unless the board's got any other concerns, but as far as the tables, if we allow you to take them out, then guess what, the next guy comes out, they gonna expect they can take them out, and next thing you know, we miss the tables, next thing you know, the, it just, that, that's just a bad setup for everybody, I, I think the tables need to stay inside the facility. Y'all have tables y'all can use?
Well, we have, you know, kinda run around, get tables, find tables, but we don't, you know.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm okay, but like I said, I think the board approved y'all being inside the building, keeping it clean, I mean, we have no problem at all, and the board says the same thing, as far as the tables going in and out of the building, I just think the tables, if we allow you to do it, it's gonna open up a hole, they'll, we see them people up there using it all the time, they take their tables outside, like, we take tables outside, we, we just get in situations like that, so... All right, do you think else? Anybody else? Okay, all right, um, item number six is adjourned.
Making a motion to adjourn?
Second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, we're out of here.
How many tables do y'all use down there? How many tables do y'all use down there?
Three.
Three.